I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Capital Committee in joint session with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. I don't know if the Board of Commissioners needs to call a meeting.
I think each board will just call to order quickly. We're going to do one set of minutes for everybody.
I can call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen?
I'll call the meeting to order for the Finance Committee.
So, we, one of the reasons I think we're all here is, I think it's a good start that we meet early in the session or in the, for the budget season. The Capital Committee last year, as we were going through our process, noted some items that we wanted to improve on in this, in this coming session as we start to review our capital requests. And through that, the Capital Committee had met over the summer with a lot of help from one of our members, Stephen Welch, with putting together a document that's going to help us sort of try to fine tune and find ways to have a common criteria as we get into reviewing our requests. Because last year, we just found, there was a lot of times that we were questioning what was, what was the criteria we were using to review our requests. So with that, we met over the summer and came up with a document that, I'm going to introduce Stephen, who's more or less the architect of this document, that's going to sort of just give us, give us an overview and give the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee an idea of how we're going to be approaching reviewing our requests this coming season. And I will pass it over to Stephen.
Thanks, Kristy, for your, those don't know me, Steve Welch, I'm a member of the CAPCOM. Of course, I appreciate the intro. I just want to say that this has really been, you know, I've been kind of behind it, filling in the blanks, but it's been a group initiative and everyone's really contributed. I think that we're working in a very collaborative manner to define our own priorities and goals. It's been a way that fit into the priorities and goals, certainly within a way, that fit in with the priorities and goals of the town, the town manager and so on and so forth. So, I just wanted to say, you know, I apologize, this is a little scripted, but I know the details in and out, but I wanted to make sure I covered things. I want to start by saying I appreciate everyone's time. I'll just run through that, the fact that the extent possibly to streamline the agenda items, one, which are the four views of the revised capital project review process by Capital Reporting Committee, which is the review of the updated and expanded project request form, and the summary of project ranking, summary of the project ranking process. So, what I'm going to do to streamline those is I'm going to go through, I'll start with a brief summary of the Capital Committee's intent, a little more fine tuned than the broader scope that Kristy, I think, provided, and then move directly to a narrative overview of the request form. I'll then provide a narrative overview of the rankings worksheet. There might be one or two others we touch on, and I think just for the sake of timeliness, it might make sense, I appreciate it, if you were going through, if you just please make a note or notes if you have questions or comments on the respective form, and I think as opposed to doing a narrative of both of them and then taking questions or comments with other members of CAPCOM or town, excuse me, or town manager, my bad. We'll do them form by form. So, we'll do the form, a narrative, question, answer, and then we'll do the rankings worksheet, question, answer. So, to get right into it, the CAPCOM intent with these particular items is to tune up the capital improvement plan effectiveness. And that includes the processes evaluation, recommendation, and after action performance measurements. At the same time, without getting into all the details, we're seeking to eliminate process based redundancies, inputting and tracking information, how we conduct the presentations and evaluations, doing it more on a process based approach versus anecdotal reviews, something, you know, changing over something that's track, tractable, relational, and therefore can be referenced by a whole few folks in the document as well as using the summary of our recommendations. The intent is also to broaden the analytical capacity by using the form and the ranking system and some other initiatives that are in the works. We'll be collecting relevant information and compiling it in a relational format, which is to say a database. And that should help us to leverage and, it should help us between reducing the redundancy and systematizing the approach to leverage and complete, not to be wasting time so much as completing more vital SIP related tasks. Part and parcel of that is to help us align our focus and the outcomes with the time and the topic goals, and part of that is imprinting and consistent application of fair and transparent expectations. And we're trying to document this and bring this forth in a way that the department has, you all as other boards who review these matters, and also participants at town meeting will have an opportunity to look at these things in advance if they so desire, whether they do or not at town meeting, I don't know. But this provides us an opportunity to document it and maybe put forth information. As you all seek that, that's not our goal. We're here to review, analyze, and make evaluations for our recommendations. So, I think it's fair to say it's a collaborative effort with the town manager that comes up? Okay. So, specifically with regard to the SIP request form, what I'm going to do is I'll walk through a narrative. I'm going to cover just, I mean, I'm really just going to walk you through the top of the form and then the categories of the form and we'll go from there. It's, what we're doing here is systematically capturing the general information you'd expect, which is here, the project introduction. No, no, can you see that? Yeah. Okay, great. And then, and then we move down to classifications, which are categorized by type and nature so that we get a little bit more granularity. Now, this is, this is initially the department head inputs, just for clarification purposes, and then later on I'll touch on where we committed the process and of course where the town manager comes in. Further, we further break down the categorization under the field prioritization and various fields of relative importance here. There's also a field, for instance, these fields indicate the relative, the, this is for the department heads to indicate where they feel this particular request fits into the functionality of the department, is it elected, is it recommended, is it required. There are other metrics here that relate to financial policies and procedural criteria that are established and help us to evaluate the particular requests in and of itself and relative to the others for our recommendations. There's another category which is useful for, a field to indicate what alternative actions may exist if funding is not made available, which is useful for the department head and town manager discussion and exploration and for later discussion between town manager and the CAPCOM on an exploration on those items too. That would be particularly relevant when we, any year that we have type funding, we've really got to differentiate these requests, which is to say, you know, most years. The next level of information is broken down under costs and funding. So, the basis of cost, basis for cost provides us certain information. It actually directs us to information, which I'll cover at the bottom of the form, which is supplemental information that's required. And this just indicates for us in a summary fashion where the, the source of the quota estimate came from. The next set is the cost breakdown. So, we have cost. So, we've got the cost breakdown, which is going to give, obviously, the department head an opportunity to initiate and kind of structure their own planning. After the first year, this becomes more a routine process and you're kind of structuring the environment in a way so that capital assets and capital asset fundings and allocations are just simply more structured. So, we have the cost breakdown. We go through the items that you would normally anticipate for a capital asset. Not all of them are required, but the information will be there and that is applicable. We go next down to the net effect on operating budget. And this gives us a window from the department head's perspective on how this affects the operating budget of the town through the department level funding. The next level is included in that is the maintenance plan. And we're going to, I'm going to touch on that in more detail later down because it's also part of our, we felt that this was a good place to include cost related information and made the most sense, but there is some supplemental information that's required later in the form, and I'd like to point out a bit of relevance to that for you all. It's, I'm sure it's that in this file. And we go down to project timeline. Again, this is useful for both the department head in structuring their requests to their planning purposes. When we talk about eliminating redundancy, the argument is that through some form of a relational database, we'll have, you know, kind of click to print reports, and those can be set up for the department head level so that they can be looking at these items and evaluating requests at that level in terms of how things fit into everyday operations, how things, if you have a request, how these fit into year to year operations and their overall budget and future capital requests. So, the, the project timeline part of it, that relates to the cost, I'm sorry, up here, I'm not going to make anything very busy. That relates to this portion of the form, but it also relates to this portion of the form, because they get a chance to get a window into, into gates of deliverables. The supplemental documents that are required are a elaboration of the, you know, a narrative and photographic elaborations of the requests beyond what the introduction level is, the paper copy of the basis for the department head cost projection, a, basically the budget impact, as we talked about for both department level and townwide. And then the townwide, the documentation, documentation for operating budget impact is part of an accountability process and instilling a culture in the processes so that the, that the department heads understand that we're looking at these things and helping them to understand that we need to be looking at these things. It's not that they aren't, it's that we want to document it and be clear about our expectations. Because if we have their expectations, we're more likely to be able to put aside any issues that would prevent us from focusing on the common goals than on most of the town. And then the summary plan for maintenance, which was mentioned earlier and above, which also has an implication on cost. And what this does is, in this location and as an added document, it kind of broadens out into an area where we haven't been perceiving but is important, and that helps us to address deferred maintenance and matters that come up in relation to that, which as a result of deferred maintenance can relate to and cause higher capital asset costs because we're replacing things versus maintaining them. So, part of what this all is, and I mentioned culture, and part of what this is, is clarifying expectations, but also kind of building in, based on the financial policy and procedures adopted by the Board of Selectmen in 2016, and what behaviors we are looking for as the town is maturing and developing and investing in capital assets. So, these, these are tools that will help us to accomplish that goal. Excuse me. So, zooming out, we come to what we're calling below the line entries. Question, let me back up for one moment. So, all of these are, in terms of our workflow process, we're not, we're not really looking at any of this initially. This is what the department head inputs, develops, contemplates, and then provides to town management. Town management has then retains the review and control to refine and kind of direct the final outcome that is presented to the Capital Committee, and that review and refinement is consistent with the goals in the financial policies and procedures. At that point, we get a copy of the request form, and we review with town management, finance, who put it, the relevance and the, before I head up and do a presentation of the finalized form, the press form, we will then review and get any information. We need to generally round out our understanding, but also to round out and help us establish where that request fits into a set of priorities that we'll cover in the rankings worksheet in a few moments. And we then take it to the next step where we'll be deliberating and evaluating and discussion amongst ourselves as CAPCOM, but also with town manager here giving this input and addressing these below item, below the line items, which relate to the funding side of the equation, whether a project or request is currently within the SIP, any balances, the status of appropriations and so on and so forth. And then, of course, recommended funding source with the, a timeline, the category, sources by category, and then a timeline that they will be deployed. And then the effects of the funding as relates to our taxes, bonds, principal and interest discussion, whether other income is being taxed. And one of the charges that the CAPCOM is to be looking at non-funding your own tax. So, it's always important to include a field for that. To kind of broaden out our discussion. So, that's, that's the form, really in a nutshell. I mean, I don't know if there's questions or comments or anyone. That's, that's, okay, good. So, now we're going to move on to-
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, is this, this is all an Excel spreadsheet at the moment?
Yeah, and actually, I'm going to touch on the functionality aspect of it after they get to the ranking in terms of the database, because really where we're going to find, well, do you mind if I just touch on that? So, what we're looking at, this was, the contemplation was that this is going to be a complicated piece of business for everyone if we're not using functionality to database. And by that, I mean relying on the database to set up tables so we can do pull down vehicles. Let me give you an example there. Care with me one second. Okay, I think this is probably a good one, Brian, of net operating, net on. So, personnel costs, what we'll be able to do with the database functionality is a, department head will be able to, and let's just say, I'm referring to department head, but the form we receive will have personnel costs. This could be checked, and as a result of that, something will happen. What that will be is that it will be fields generated that indicate the number of employees, where you can pull down and select the number of employees, their K scale, their pay rate, bills in, overtime, and all the rest of it. So, and then that, in the backend, is fed from regularly updated tables. So, we're not dealing with this, what we're eliminating is redundancy, is having to put this in by hand, having human error, having to track it, translate it to other reports or forms, or eliminating all of that, or systematizing it basically. So, by using the database, initially it's going to be Excel, but the database is in the works for the upcoming, next year.
So, for fiscal '19, it's going to be Excel spreadsheets, and if I'm the head of DPW and I want 10 dump trucks, I've got to fill out 10 forms and do they add themselves up into a summary for my department, or is all that still kind of a future enhancement? I'm just thinking in terms of how much work-
Yeah, sure, no, I-
-this department head has to do to, I think the form looks terrific and you're capturing a ton of information, it just seems like the administrative hurdle in year one could be a little-
I think, it seems to me to be a good, a good question, there are going to be really important points. We happen to be blessed by the fact that we have some new department heads, and we're introduced into a culture that's a little bit different from the onset. You know, we're not wired in a certain perspective or approach to a process. So, I think that that's part of the solution, excuse me, part of the solution. The other part of the solution is that, you know, Olivia's handling how a particular request comes in, if it's 10 dump trucks or one dump trucks, and how those are, you know, classified and processed. But I think so far, the feedback we've received is that, yes, it's more than we wanted, but we're used to, but we, it's generally been well received, and I think once the functionality of the database comes into place, you know, this is going to be department head, town management, finance, CAPCOM, Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, all the decisions going to be, we're going to be able to dig in deep with click to print reports that are highly customizable and while at the same time eliminating some of the front end employee issues where with the example of the personnel. The other aspect of that, I just want to say is, what we were finding is that we were struggling through meetings to get all of the information we needed in to make an informed opinion or recommendation at a department head presentation. There's just no way to capture the information we needed and then in an anecdotal manner and then to process it. So, this was a result in part of that and in part in terms of other improvements. So, I hope that answers your question.
While you're on, just to go to screen, under prioritization, so in this example, David or somebody checked in, results in lower operations and maintenance costs, where's the substance or the backup to support that, or is this just a check the box and move on? Because it seems to me, particularly in something like that, that's fairly subjective if there's no backup.
Yeah, I think first year is going to be a policing matter with town management. Second year, it's all right here. It's all right here under cost and funding, the cost breakdown, we'll have a cost and we'll have that effect on operating budget with respect to the maintenance costs, the personnel costs and utilities. I'm not going to say that these can be negative entries. So, if they're eliminated position, database can process it, it'll process it based on the payroll scale and the, you know, all the information relevant to that particular level of employee.
Well, presumably on the example you just showed, it would be negative, but if you're, if you're making the capital investment because it's going to lower you, result of lower operation or maintenance costs, it would have to go negative down there, I would presume.
I think that that, I, I think that that's going to depend on certain factors. There may be that you're putting in a capital asset, not necessarily using only this example, but you may have a personnel cost where you need a higher level of personnel or who's trained on pay scale to be operating the equipment. So, but the purpose of this form is that we are going to be able to identify those in our meetings and discuss them versus try and dig through and get the information and even evaluate. So, this is going to bring us next level in that regard. And then we will find, you know, the other thing I want to say is, we understand that this is a, this is a process of evolution, and these things are going to have to be fine tuned for sensitive, you know, greater sensitivity to this area to meet our goals. And there are going to be things where we're going to have to change. I think that area is going to get picked up in the form. I think that that's really what we designed it for.
Yeah, if I may add also, this is not going to replace any department head interviews, that process is still intact. The site inspections by committee members is still intact, which we're moving, you know, before we actually moved the department head this year. Last year, we did it after. So, there's still going to be a lot of room for questioning and narrative and on that one.
Look, there's also a proactive standpoint, David, from a department head side, the evolution is re-education, or even better word, education, how a role in both public and or private budget should be put together, because a purchase of an item may save you money in one respect, but it may cost you the extra to hire two more people. And when you wear both hats as the Capcom FinCon, one of the things that FinCon wants to know is, okay, what are those people cost? Why didn't we buy that product? And I think that's good for all some BOS, and an education for the BOS so that collectively we don't have, and don't take offense because there's no offense intended, a micromanagement of a department head from top down to bottom up. This gives them an opportunity to educate themselves and educate us at the same time. Specific example, when we brought the Jetter example to our Capcom meeting, guess what? Ninety percent of us said, what the hell's up Jetter? So, those are educations for us as Capcom members. And if we don't, we're going to pass the buck to FinCon, you're going to pass it to BOS, and then pass it there, and then you go to town meeting, who's running the circus? So, to me, this is educational.
And Peter, just to pick up on your point and to wrap it with David's, is, you know, with the Jetter truck, not only do we not know, but in the course of our business last year, we might not have gotten into enough of the information to make an informed decision about how it relates to the personnel cost. Personnel costs are not our purview, but there are things that personnel costs relate to that are, and we also understood that we're developing a database. And in light part, this is also from the town management to be assessing and utilizing in their own analytics and determining what, where are their efficiencies and where are there things that we can be changing or not changing? Where are the human resources investments we can be making or developing so that, you know, maybe one year, using these, this information, all in database, one year, we can, we can model and look at how that may actually decrease costs in years forward. I'm not saying that personnel costs have a tendency to decrease, I won't be saying that. I'm saying that having this information provides us that opportunity.
But you are collecting, I mean, you are looking at personnel costs when you look at the capital request and in this form.
We are, but I, our purview isn't to directly comment on, we don't believe you should have more people or less people. Our, our purview is to comment how, how personnel affects capital allocations, correct?
Well, let me, let me give you an example. So, we've gone 20 years past about this discussion of advanced life support with the fire department, which involves significant capital investment in terms of upgraded or brand new emergency vehicles, upgrade and hiring of additional personnel and an enormous amount of training. So, you've got an enormous being, you know, approaching six, seven figures. So, you've got these, you know, specific line items, all of which presumably have some very direct impact upon the kind of decision you might make about, about going to advanced life support. And I guess from my perspective, it seems to me that, you know, with you all looking at that capital request for the vehicles, that there's a secondary and perhaps tertiary impact associated with that, which I think seems to me is the purview of the Capital Committee to at least surface it, and that is the Finance Committee or the Board of Selectmen or a combination at town meeting makes a decision about.
This will surface it. I think we're saying this, the same thing in different ways, perhaps. What I was trying to articulate was that we'll be taking that information and processing and evaluating it, we'll be making a recommendation, for instance, using the advanced life support. Our recommendation now can programmatically include what a line item, which will just be a text entry, of what the increase or decrease in personnel costs are, and how we feel they affect the capital at asset allocations and funding. That will then go to the Board of Selectmen and FinCon with that information in there, where my understanding is you all, you all deal with things along the lines of, very specifically with personnel, as opposed to we deal with personnel as it affects capital asset allocations. You deal with personnel, capital asset allocations, and funding and making recommendations on those things. So, that's, I think, where I'm just trying to differentiate. We're going to, we may report on it if we see it, and we feel it's relevant, which I think we would, but we're not, we aren't charged with making a recommendation on the personnel end of it. It will inform our opinion on our recommendation, but it isn't going to be the only thing, and it's not an area that we have really a direct say. We don't have any direct say in personnel.
No, but, but I think part of what you're getting at, David, is that the process, the new process in this form is meant to draw out not only that there's a capital cost for a particular asset, vehicle, but perhaps it requires additional staff, perhaps it requires training, perhaps it requires licensing. There could be all these other costs that run out in the future, and I think sometimes in the past, we haven't always made decisions including those future, whether they're maintenance, operating, training, who knows what. But the, part of the goal of this process is to draw that out so that the department head doesn't just buy a million dollar ambulance and sort of leave aside the fact that it's going to cost you another billion dollars to train the staff to drive. So, that's, that's meant to be surfaced in this process.
And if I could, Stephen wanted to hit one at a time, but he's going to answer some of your concerns specifically with the rankings sheet that we as Capcom rank each of those items. Do we believe it's going to save money, or do we believe it's going to cost money? And yes, it's front loaded, but as you know, you're building a database for the future. And I will tell you, having four years on the Capcom, every annual Capcom budget has had, and I don't even want to use a percentage, a large degree of change each and every year, surprise, surprise, surprise. So, if you're going to front load and put that energy as a department head, you may not make some of those surprises you may be thinking forward and taking some good time. And that, yes, that's education.
You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're answering the questions as we go, because this is, it's one of the cap for it.
One quick question, this is all retained, so this is, I like the idea of doing this, and this is all retained as history. So, we have, so we have a, we have a history that we're building, a history year after year.
Well, yeah, and may I?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
The added benefits of that with respect, you know-
The added benefits of that with respect, you know, that's the database side and the analytics that I just touched on, is that we're going to have an opportunity, and it's not just us. Our charge as the Capcom, we have a certain degree of oversight and evaluate and reporting on after action, on deliverabilities and costs and what's left over in the appropriation to some extent on those lines. But this information is going to be retained and it's going to allow town manager, finance in the respective areas of detail to be processing so much of this information that we well as not have. And, and that would include such things as an after action report, perhaps. Where are we relative to when you said it would be delivered? Where are you relative to the cost you said would be delivered? Where are you relative to personnel, the net effect on operating budget? And this isn't intended by in any way, shape or form to be holding someone's feet to the fire. On the other hand, it is about accountability and it is about making an informed decision before the fact in terms of funding and after the fact with regards to understanding how accurate the information we're receiving is and then giving the department heads an opportunity to look at that information and find some their own process. So that we're all working towards the same goal in our own different ways. So I, and that's an important distinction or important facility to the database. Anyone else? Okay. So I'm just going to jump to the worksheet, which is our, bear with me a moment. This is, by the way, this is part of what we were trying to avoid. I don't know if you guys can see this, but I mean, I think it's relevant to just bring it, bring it up. These are the relevant, the criteria, broken down on criterion levels. These are a multitude requests using 18 arbitrarily. This is the, the number of Capcom members and professional resources. And below here are all the department heads. I think there's 26 on your account. This represents what we would have gone through in the last, the last process that we were bringing forth with the new criteria and evaluating each one of these. Now, we'd be in a discussion between each member, this doesn't even include the members, all the department head discussion. This includes, well, it does, but it includes discussion on this criterion between this request and each is relates to one another. So what we're doing, which is a segue into the ranking worksheet, is we're eliminating this, this aspect that connects, in a way, the requests from ranking the relevance, the relevant importance of the criteria. And how we're doing that is, that's our draft. Bear with me a second. All right. So this is our worksheet. This is what we've been working, this is, this is the result that we've been looking at. What this represents is we took the relevant financial policies and procedures criteria and we listed them as criteria. And then we grouped, so they're, these are, these are listed here. And then we grouped them for logical processing and to be ranked relative, in relative importance one to one another. So it's a, basically, it's a, it's a layered pairwise comparison and we use it to create a consolidated model. Each committee member's unique background, expertise and experience, which is expressed as a rank of importance for each of these criteria. What we did is we individually compared this, this criteria, this priority to this one and to this one. And we signed a relative rank. And then we did the same for the medium recommended by a department head to preserve necessary functionality. And we ranked its relative importance to a service that, or a capital asset request that prevents degradation and one that enhances though is not, enhances service though is not required. So each, each group was, in each instance, within a group, these were compared to one another. And the result of that was that we received a rank of relative importance. So for instance, in our group, the result was that things that are required to prevent degradation relative to the whole of 100% of this group are 73.1% of importance. That's their, that's their weight. Whereas something that's recommended to preserve necessary functionality as compared to the other two is 19.2. We did that for each of these. We took heritage, vision, culture, legacy, which is a category that we as a group introduced and felt was important after discussion last year, which we can talk about it as we get into this. We, we did, we compared that to schedule replacements. And schedule replacements are things that are, the department head has, has entered and cleared with town management as part of a program to keep up with useful life and to replace vehicles or other capital assets. We, so you get the idea there. What we then did was having ranked each of these relative to one another, we then ranked the group's importance relative to each other. So in this instance, we were ranking this group against this group. We also ranked this group against this group and this group. We did the same for these, so on down the line. As a result of that, we got what's called, what we're referring to as a global rank of relative importance. So just to very briefly give you an insight of what you're looking here, this category, this category represents a rank of relative importance compared to each of the other groups at an importance of 35, six, 35 and a half percent. The breakdown was that if it was required to prevent degradation, it had a weighting of, of just over 25%, oh, 26% compared to something that was elective, enhanced though, a service though was not required, came in as a consolidated input of all the members' inputs as 2.7. What we will do with this form is after completing the review and evaluation of each of the request forms, we'll determine the applicability of a particular request to get a relative rank of importance. And that's, we have a column here. So we'll enter as a group determination what we feel the applicability of this particular request is to each of these, which will result in a total rank. This rank of relative importance is not the only tool we're using. It's one of many. It has the functionality, will have the functionality in many regards, as the database, database will on a more limited basis. So that, for instance, we'll be able to generate a report if we have something that, if we have requests that are competing in our minds under the recommendation. We'll be able to evaluate where they sit as compared to one another or as compared to other requests by the individual, by the criteria individually or the criteria overall. So that's, that's where we were going with it and all we're attempting to do with it. It took a lot of work to put together. It's going to have usefulness. It's, it's not the only thing. Where this is relative to, it's not our only metric, where this is relative to points of data that you brought up and Peter, you also brought up, I think from the other side of the point, is in our deliberations as to, with respect to whether it reduces operations and management costs. So what we're doing there is we're each weighing in with our own inputs. What we're doing in it in more an expedited fashion, because we've already ranked a relative rank of importance for these, we're assigning a rank of relative importance to a request. And that's where we get into eliminating a lot of the spaghetti that was in that chart that we saw. So, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm Stephen, what's your name?
I'm Joanna.
Joanna, thank you.
I'm wondering, how does this compare to what other towns or municipalities in Massachusetts are using?
Sure.
And have they had success?
I don't know. I think we're the first.
To have a ranking?
It's not uncommon, I guess. No, I think they're using a ranking. I believe our financial policy procedures were in part utilized that template. This particular ranking system, no. What I did is I looked into how, you know, Six Sigma and some of the other quality assessment processes are utilizing, this is really a multi-criteria decision-making in group settings. And what are the, what are the computational methods for accomplishing that that are generally accepted by peers, both, you know, nationally and internationally? And this process is, we're actually working with a, the guy's, and Gail's joking with me about it, but there's an mathematician in Singapore who runs a consulting business. He provides this service and he goes to these symposiums that deal with this specific computational method that incorporates eigenvalue vectors, geometric means ratios, other linear and non-linear algebra and algorithms. And so it does that on a mathematical side and it does, it incorporates in the judgment scales and evaluations and how those are computed, the psychology of group decision-making. And then they take that and they come up with, let's see, do you know what the results in this are? So, let me just see if I can, bear with me one second. Well, in any event, I was just going to show you some of the background that's, you know, behind, what's behind the curtain there. But, yeah, we've got an mathematician in Singapore.
So Stephen, if I can interrupt you. So to get back to the, the ranking form, are we supposed to understand that in that column, the global rank of relative importance, that the capital program committee has sort of all weighed in subjectively and in effect, the way, one way to interpret those numbers is that you think that continuity A, those three factors are sort of 35.4% of the importance for a particular project and then the next one is 17, the next one is 23. And, and you've, you've achieved those numbers by the committee, however many, it was six of you, eight of you.
Seven.
Seven of you, in effect, discussing all these things and, and doing a rank and so you, and it all sort of weighted averages out with all these numbers.
Exactly correct.
So, so this, and this, so this represents your feeling and your thinking about this ranking system on, you know, September 24th or whenever you did this.
Correct. That's exactly correct. This is kind of.
So if new information came up, somebody might change his mind and these numbers could change.
No, what we've determined is that for the sake of consistency, we were making a determination for the budget as of a certain date for the budget season. We may change that over the course of future as refinements come into play, there may be other, okay, so future years.
Future years.
So this, the ranking criteria for fiscal '19, as you figure it out.
How does, how does it tie back into like the master plan or the goals and objectives of the board of selectmen or like the vision? So how, how does it weigh?
I'm so glad you asked.
I'm going to start to train.
Guys in Singapore.
Sorry.
So. Currently, the strategic plan.
That's right, Dan.
You're right. Currently, one of the, we're gathering, because as more variables come into play, more, because the system is understood and the utility of the system is understood, and we expand perhaps the criterion, the criteria on a criterion basis to direct behavior. For instance, disaster recovery is important. We want to put it in here and we want to rank it. And once the department heads know about it, because it's part of the strategic plan or a strategic plan, the disaster recovery. So it can be utilized in that way. It can be utilized because we have town endorsed plans to reduce electricity use. So we have, and that's part of the existing financial support policies and strategic criteria, which is to reduce energy consumption. The, another aspect is it directly, you know, it directly addresses whether it supports a strategic plan. And the strategic plan could be the master plan, it could be a maintenance plan, it could be the wastewater plan. There's a variety of plans. Personally, I would like to see support strategic plan insofar as, just want to answer your question, I'm going to do it with respect to my own perspective on these things. The way I, I see these is ultimately, everyone is on the same page with the plan. The outcomes have been predetermined, what it is we want to accomplish, when we want to accomplish it, generally how we want to accomplish it. And what I mean by that is management, the board of selectmen, the finance committee and the capital committee to the extent of reviewing and making recommendations. Those would be part of strategic plans. In any large business, you're planning in advance, we would know our 2030 outcome. Now, we're not going to know exactly. We're not going to know within $100,000. But we're going to have a plan and that plan is going to be live. It can be managed and it can be altered and refined based on the inputs of the appointed and elected persons who represent the town and the community and what it is they want to accomplish. So that's a long way of saying that ultimately, I believe the most important element in here will be that it supports a strategic plan. And that will then direct the behavior of all the requests, all the department heads in terms of focusing and maintaining on the outcomes that are most important to the town. Because our most important outcomes are delineated in plans and then we're referring back to those both in these meetings for our group goals, board of selectmen's goals and so on and so forth.
So the answer to the question, yes.
The answer is yes. But I wanted to give you some detail because this is, we've talked about it, but you all haven't then, haven't either.
How does it weight the importance of inside, either of the one plan versus another or inside the plan itself? When you look at, say, the master plan, there's some things that are ranked more highly and there's others that are in the future, like 20 years from now. How does it pick that stuff up?
So currently, it doesn't because we don't have enough, we don't have sufficient criterion per, to create a group under supports a plan. However, so we put it under resilience because, in my mind, infrastructure improvement could even, I'm not going to segue into that. Ultimately, if we were to go down that route as a, as a, as a community led by the board of selectmen and finance committee and so on and so forth, town manager, we would be able to have a whole other group. And that group would be ranked, each of the plans relative to one another, and then the group, which is, you know, supports a plan, would be ranked relative to these, these other groups. So in fact, I mean, it just so happens that continuity A, which is a nominal, it doesn't represent anything other than a nominal so logical processing of the information, happens to be the highest rank. But resilience could be, resilience may have a subgroup which is plans and that could catapult us to the top. Or we may just have one that says supports plans and that catapults us to the top. It's interesting to note that while this group, which includes inarguably the highest ranked item, which is prevents degradation, comes out at a relative rating of 35, call it 35%, resilience came out at the net, barely the next highest at 23%. So I think we're, we have, there's, the only thing that this demonstrated was, did I answer your question?
I think so. The answer was further no.
The other just.
I'm civilized. We don't, we don't rank.
We don't rank above and below.
Not yet.
And not yet.
Not yet. I know, I got it.
The process and part of that process was bringing it forward and getting accepted by our own membership, underserved and accepted, and then getting it brought forward and accepted by town and finance and then you all.
Maybe you're going to do this anyway. I assume then each project is going to have one of these sheets and you're going to rank each project, you know. Can you sort of walk through how the committee is going to take this and, you know, sort of, you know, review each project and then I guess it's all going to be sort of summed up and you're going to get, you're going to get a giant rank order.
Yeah. Can I just add one thing? Joe, the other thing is this requires every committee member to comment on every item. So for example, last year, we had, it was a number of items where maybe someone was not present. So to get a true like recording of everyone's input in each meeting for each item, we all, that's, that's the way this is going to work, is everyone has to be present. If you're not at the meeting, you got to do your diligence to be, to bone up.
Right. But I can also do, I guess I'm just, it looks like you have to fill in 12 numbers, maybe 24 numbers. So I'm just, so how's that going to work?
So the key ingredient on that, Joe, is I think what we resolved at our last meeting was that each member will have a worksheet and at some point within, I'm going to push, they don't know yet, but I'm going to push for before the next meeting, but, or at the next meeting, you'll turn in the worksheet, you'll have, build in, you'll have a worksheet that simply says, you know, whatever the format is, it includes your, your name, no social security number and your, your ranking of relative importance for each of these items. That will then be put into spreadsheet right here for meeting, your worksheet, that will consolidate the inputs and auto-fill for, this is a request column. So this example, FY '19, 100, represents a request. The individual inputs, the consolidated. The individual inputs, the consolidated view of, or the consolidated data from individual inputs will automatically fill here and give us a ranking at the bottom. Now, we've talked about, and Peter brought up, and I think it's a great idea, we just don't have the capacity right now to be inputting that. You log in and you input it after you consider the department head's presentation, our discussion, town manager's presentation, that portion of it which relates to financing, funding mechanisms, so on and so forth. You know, we don't do this right at that meeting, we do it at some point thereafter within a week. And you go online as a Capcom member, you log in, you put it in, you can verify your results, you hit submit, boom, it's done, it's automatically updates, it's in the database. We have a report that comes out through our professional staff as part of our package. This is one more tool.
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I think it's, at least I'm trying to remember, this is a tool for the Capcom. It's very robust. It's based in some pretty sound and also kind of new statistical thinking, which is I think very cool. It's also, there's a, you know, pretty good distribution of these. It's not like there's one's 99 and the other, or the one's 95 and the other 111. So you found, you found prioritization that, you know, these elements that can be, that really won't always drive the decision one way. And I guess from my perspective as a board of selectmen, I'm most interested in the process and not so much the means of it. And on the piece about the, there is a lot of soft stuff on the strategic plans and priorities. You know, we can, I mean, that, it's okay to be a little bushy for now, I think. This is, you know, I really applaud you for this tool.
Thank you. I think one thing I want to mention is, because we talked about this more, it relates to how, for instance, information from the CIP request forum will filter back to FinCom and Board of Selectmen. This will be, you know, we can include in our recommendation, you know, independence, that includes where each recommend, a report that shows where each request falls relative to one another. Much less dense, very easy to digest and read in terms of rank of relevant importance. So then what we're using is, we're using this information to help inform you, and you're, you are informed about what we determine the rank of relevant importance, and also as a result of meetings like this, understand how that means, what it's all about. And to the extent you decide that it's relevant in your own individual processes or thinking and evaluation, then you can incorporate it or you can discard it. This is a tool for us, our charge is to rank the requests. So we try to come up with a tool that is very comprehensive, that's transparent, that is consistent, and programmatic. So I'm hoping, now, I think a lot more work went into this than, it will be a useful tool, but it's not a holy grail. This is really just one of the tools we're going to be using in our recommendation. But the point was, is that this is something we're going to pass on to you also. It's not, we're going to give you a, you know, we may decide as a, as a group that we want to point out where each recommendation fits into the three highest ranked criteria. I don't know, how, you know, we'll decide as a group what we want to do, but.
Just to give you some specifics of a few years of compilation of what the department head's thought process and how it looks and plot. We had a request for a capital item which then was not approved by the capital committee, and then appeared in the finance committee's reports as a request for operating expense. Then it was approved, and then it appeared as a new capital expense without any new employees. And two years after that, it appeared as that capital expense backwards again, or back to us again, now it had employees attached to it. That is ridiculous. So we have to kind of, wait a minute. What, you know, and this sort memorializes some good factual information that then we can push and excuse me, ladies, but the good old boy aspect aside on making decisions. At the end of the day, if one of us doesn't like where that ranking is as a committee, we'll have a conversation. And that's the beauty of an open committee meeting. What we're trying to do is to make a decision that doesn't come back three times and then get voted on the town meeting floor. And these three groups here have done a lot of work to get to something that just gets either squashed or, or on the high side. And I, I get discouraged as a private citizen, private world, helping out the public, but I see that, because that doesn't happen in corporations or small business.
So Peter, will you guys then go back and retroactively grade all the things that are in queue now before we go starting this new year budget process?
Well, we're starting, we're starting fresh with all of what we're just hearing. One week, two weeks.
Christie, can I, can I follow up on one thing? The simple way I look at this, even though it is complicated, it looks like we're changing everything. This is how I see it. It's, it eliminates the all of the say aye sort of mindset, like just say yes, because you don't know how to say no or even ask to have a say.
Pretty much.
Me in the middle. So in other words, instead of it just being a six to zero vote, say, in our committee, it may be 72% six to zero for these reasons. And it sort of gives you how people are thinking instead of how you're voting. And that's how I see this, even though, you know, I don't want to do more work because I have enough to do. But the reason behind this does make sense for a lot of the sort of confusing items that come to us, not the simple automatic stuff like those pack, pack things or something that you just say yes for that. There's other things that have a lot of questions, even if it seems like a yes. So that's my way I support this, that's the reason I do. And the legacy thing, you can explain that another time.
Yeah.
But it's important, though.
It is important, but just for the first, you know, first meeting, I didn't want to get too far.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Matt, that's helpful. So you illustrated this to us.
Perhaps it's built in here, lack of familiarity is why I'm going to ask this question, but if you had a public safety project, which presumably might be one of our highest, as a town, our highest priority, and you had a infrastructure enhancement project that improves the quality of life, I eat, my good friend, Matt, concerned about doing stuff on Old South Road, how do, how do those get weighed out? I mean, how, do you have an ability to look at different priorities for that kind of category? Because as I've sort of mentally been going through here, I could come up with a very high score on a project that, in the scheme of what we have to look at, is not that important.
Right, so I think, David, the answer to your question, we understand that we need to build in some more granularity and sensitivity in the model. Right now, we're working with what we were given, which are the financial policies and procedures priorities. That's what these are.
I don't know everyone understands, that's part of our rules and rights.
Yeah, we're, we're working with what we have to introduce the concept and then perhaps to develop them so it's a more refined model. So the answer to your question is, in part, we can use the rankings to differentiate those two, but we're always going to fall back, either whether we refine this or not, we're always going to fall back to the evaluation as a group in conjunction with town management and come up with a recommendation. However, then we'll be able to put together a recommendation that informs you all of how we came up with it. And where it fits into, for instance, we have impressing, oh, here, let me use this as an example. The things that we determined was that there are some pre-ranking priorities, and I don't think you can all read that, but, or however inaligant it may be, we're using the term pre-ranking priority at this point. And what that means is that relative to these other priorities, we have some priorities that we have to consider. Those are imminent threat, illegal requirement, whether it's phase funding, and then one that we've come up with, which is a placeholder, which has some other utility. I'm not going to get into it now because it's just, it's kind of, it's not relevant to the overall process, other than it allows us to be planning years out for projects that may not actually be fully quantifiable. But, so what we would do is we would check that we have a legal requirement, the fire station, God forbid, excuse the irony, burned down, and we need a fire station, we've got to build it. So we've got a legal requirement, and it, it addresses an imminent threat. So that particular request would get a little IP for imminent threat and a little LR up here for legal requirement. However, that won't preclude our processing the rankings or to maintain our own level of information, but it will very likely bring a project to the top. So that's one way that a project may be a low ranking here, it may increase operation management costs, it may have no effect on energy or improvements efficiency and effectiveness, it doesn't have a direct relation to the strategic plan, it's not, actually, I mean, it's an infrastructure improvement in terms of we've got an asset on the books, but, and it doesn't lead you to overstressed burden. So we may have something that ranks incredibly low, but there is a reason that it has to move at the front. Programmatically, with respect to the rankings, that will be programmed in here. But again, overall, our evaluations are what's going to determine the recommendations. This is a guide for us, there's also a method for us to indicate one of our, one area of what our charge is to you all. Does that help, Matt?
Yeah.
And just remember, just remember, when we go to town meetings, these are all usually separate articles with separate filing, so we're.
No, I understand that, but.
With or without that, you know, the way to get approved is going to.
But, but as I think about it, and I'll go back to, you know, public safety is, you know, perhaps the most important capital project if one comes, that arguably should be ahead of everybody else, regardless of how it ends up over here on your rankings.
Is it general matter? I definitely disagree as a specific, you know, it gets into the specifics. So there's two things. One, this sheet doesn't preclude us from advancing our public safety capital assets to the front of the line. There's nothing that precludes us. This, this gives us an opportunity to have a dialogue we're required to have and track it and be consistent in that. The recommendation is where we come out and say, despite the fact that this ranks so low, this is why we're recommending it. Now, on the specifics, if it's an $80 million fire station, some people may disagree that it's a public safety thing, not picking on the fire station, I'm just saying that there are, I'm using that as an example to illustrate specifics where maybe as a general rule, public safety goes to the front. But then we also need to evaluate such things as the funding mechanisms, the overall policies, and so on and so forth.
Okay, so, so this, this structure is going to rank the X number of projects? Did I get it?
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't stop the FinCom and Board of Selectmen from going through and saying, well, wait a minute, you know, the fire station has to go up to the top of all this just to become.
Go for the Capcom.
Yeah, no, or the, or the Capcom.
You're going to know how useful this is in a couple of months, right?
It puzzles me a little bit how if we, maybe it just wasn't the right example, if we didn't have a fire station on the island, why the ranking system wouldn't put that as a top priority? Like, why it might get low rankings? Because I would think that it would prevent degradation 100% and would support a strategic plan if we suddenly had no fire station.
And that's why hypotheticals.
Yeah.
And I should correct myself. In terms of the priorities we, we have, a fire station would, you know, we have a social responsibility, perhaps not, I think the requirement, it would rise to the top. But again, we're using criteria that were established in 2016 by the board of selectmen with a forward-looking view, not knowing how detailed we might get. So there is room for improvement. In fact, we're looking, I mean, I don't know we, but I anticipate that this is likely going to be a two- or a three-year process to get the pieces into place of the framework and to validate that whole architecture and make sure that it's working the way it's designed before we even really begin to realize the full potential. Let's start to realize some of the potential, see where we have sauce spots, let's see where we have flashpoints, let's see where we need to make improvements. But there's nothing here that precludes doing the thing that needs to be done. And it certainly doesn't preclude you all in terms of FinCom and Board of Selectmen.
And it potentially focuses, it focuses the conversation on, on the important matter, right? If you get something that is an outlier, that everyone kind of agrees as an outlier or wants to raise up as an outlier and say, this is way below on the list, but it's important, it gets, it gets the discussion right to the heart of the matter and why we should talk about that, I think. And then the algorithm gets better over time, right? So the more discussion you're having disagreeing with the rank order, next year you'll improve the algorithm a little bit. If it gets to be perfect, so you don't even have to talk about it, you know, that, fine, it probably never does.
Right, and then, I mean, to close this out, because we've got a bunch of other stuff on the agenda, I want to segue into the priorities, the common priorities. Because these are priorities that we're using that are established by Tom and Antucka. I think we would, we'd like to invite discussion about the priorities and a more, a more comprehensive set of priorities so that this is a functional tool for both the board of selectmen and the finance committee as the capital request forum information. Because right now, if, if we're using priorities that aren't in alignment with what the board of selectmen and town manager and finance committee would like to see, we're using what's given to us. But we overall, my suggestion in this group meeting is that part of what we should be doing is convening to develop a set of goals and priorities, the most important ones. And I presume that those are going to be within the context of strategic plan, master plan, the ways, you know, and then more detailed that wastewater treatment plans. But those plans should be informing our priorities, is my personal perspective on it. And I would just invite you and challenge you that in addition to everything else we have to do, that we put that on our plate and begin to work on it. Because if this isn't, if this is, you know, a 10-year plan that's informing a 20-year plan that's informing a 30-year plan, that's the direction we need to go, because otherwise we're kind of really doing another version of EARNA.
Just my quick thought on it is, I, I think, what I'd like to see somehow is, I think the schools and the public safety seem to rise to the top consistently. And I think things that get dropped are things like bike paths and, you know, softer things that, oh, we have to do that later. So, you know, my concern is that, you know, depending what numbers are put on quote-unquote "public safety" or whatever, that some of these other things will never be done. So my concern is more, how do we make sure that things that are good for the economy, good for the engine of the island are tackled? And it doesn't have to be a bunch of neighbors ready to hang us all because people are being, you know, almost run down on their street every week. So that, you know, so that, my, my sort of goal, I would hope the goal would be that some of those things that have been in the queue for 20 years actually are dealt with and don't get bumped by something else just because it's given a higher weight.
Well, Matt, you're, just, I'll tell you something real quick, is, that's a, more the same way of saying what I was trying to say, is we need to prioritize our goals so we can all focus on the same goals, to get the outcomes that we all want as determined in a consolidated process.
So this could do, this has a potential of doing that, then?
Well, this, perhaps not this particular worksheet, but this particular process, I mean, the nuclear regulatory agency governments use this, this was used to determine how to defeat apartheid in South Africa. This is not new stuff. This is used, and it's used comprehensively on important subject matters, and we can avail ourselves to that type of a process in determining, a bunch of people get together and determining what the most important priority is. Well, how are you going to determine that? We could sit around and talk about it forever, or we could actually systematically procedurally rank it, so.
A lot of these items, too, are getting, still getting vetted by two committees, a board, and a town meeting.
And I think it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
I shut down because that was my end and I don't have the agenda.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I mean, as a capital committee member, I don't recall ever really getting a formal sort of priorities from the board of selectmen, so I don't know how, in what form that would come. And I will sort of just, I mean, if we wanted to be looked at prior to us jumping into our request this year, then, I mean, we're, I think we're, in two weeks, we're going to start getting into our interviews. So I don't know, what thought is, what thought is.
I think the, the agenda item establishment of joint priorities was exactly what is being talked about here. We need to all be on the same page. I was trying to call us, still on the same page, maybe? So that as we're going through the ranking process, Capcom isn't ranking a whole bunch of stuff real high that the selectmen doesn't want to do. So I think from, and that's something that on my end, town admin end, I've gotten some feedback from the board that, for example, infrastructure is something that's likely to be a high priority going into the next fiscal year for operating budgets and capital budgets. So that is going to come through. So that is going to come through in our recommendations, in our ranking process for the, for the project. So that was just on there in case any of board members are...
But we haven't been clear, let's be honest. You know, we haven't been clear, and I don't think we're going to get clear in two weeks. So we're still going through our strategic planning process, we've got another session to set up.
Yep.
And even on the operating side, we reviewed the operating budget for next year the other night, the other night, and Libby took us through it, and then it was like, okay, anything else you guys want in? She was great, that off, we're like, oh yeah, well, we'd like something for that, we'd like something for that. And it wasn't really related to a plan, or are we just not being a little self-prickery here?
Sure. Well, I mean, there is a reason why we have a Finance Committee rep and a Board of Selectmen rep on the committee, you know, so I mean, if there's, if there's something that is, comes up in a meeting that's relative to the Capital Committee from either board or committee that, that's, you know, related and brought up in, in our discussion. So, and one thing that Peter had spoke about that I think is very important is just the transparency of requests after they leave our, you know, after we make our recommendations. I think our committee members are interested to see where those end up and what the ultimate fate, if it's approved or not, or what, based on what our recommendations are, if those are still standing or if they change. It'd just be nice, in the past, I've heard something's not going through on the street, I'd just rather hear it from, you know, internally, I think that would be helpful. And other than that, I'm, I don't really have anything else. I don't know if there's anything else that we want to discuss. I think there's, I think this was a good idea. We should probably do it a little more often, maybe quarterly, for some reasons or not, I don't know, maybe if there's other reasons why we should be meeting, but I think as far as priorities, you know, meeting four times a year, a lot of that could come out in just our meetings alone.
Christie, maybe we're going to have to mention that we're going to have a strategic planning session again, and maybe we'd meet again, I don't know, if we, like, we can have another joint meeting with your committee, but I think it's good to inform you what we did.
And I was just going to say, in our first strategic planning session, I mean, it's very broad still, but definitely our top priority was housing in regard to year-round and workforce and affordable housing, and how to move anything in regard to that forward. Transportation issues, all transportation issues, bus service, bike paths, roadways, sidewalks. And then number three was environmental.
Environment.
Yes. And number three was environmental issues and quality, and we're starting to talk about coastal resiliency. So just, I mean, these are broad, but to give you an idea of the thinking of the board in ranking of top priorities.
We, as Stephen had mentioned, this is our first go with this. This is, this is not going to be a perfect document, with all due respect, Stephen, this is probably going to get reworked somewhat, we're going to find things that we may have missed or certain components, but we're, you know, I think we're, we're looking forward to finding what those are and seeing how thorough, you know, the first run-through is. You know, it is, it is, it is going to be a little more work for the department heads, but we're trying to draw as much information out of them as possible prior to us, you know, meeting with them. So anyway, we'll, we'll see how it goes, but we're, we're sort of new to it as well. And I don't know ultimately what the final presentation will look like when we come to the board and committees, but we'll, we'll make sure it's thorough.
Do you have a cutoff on dollar value for the capital, these coming questions coming to you? $25,000, $10,000, $5,000?
Fifty? That's on our, that's on our agenda to discuss next.
Well, for a specific project, the threshold is 50 or higher?
Unless, unless it might, unless it's aggregated for some reason or another, I guess.
One of the thought, this, this begins with a form that's filled out by the department.
Correct.
So, and Don just mentioned housing, so there are some, some things that the department head may not be thinking about that would cost, that would be some capital expenditures, and you might think about how, how solicit those, because I don't know if anybody's going to suggest, you know, for how...
Well, the road back here comes to mind.
I mean, in the absence of, you know, the 6FG, how, how do we get those kinds, that kind of thinking? Environmental, you know, we, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to, like, shed a light on that, because it doesn't...
I mean, if there's a, there's a request that touches on some, you know...
No, I understand, but who's, who, who should be worried about that, putting those requests?
I should be worrying about that, and you should be worrying about that, because what's going to happen is, once we have a strategic plan, it's going to take, take a bit of time.
Yeah.
So, and at Town Administration, we're sort of gleaning out when there are discussions at board or other levels, okay, they seem to want to be focusing on whatever, so we need to turn that...
It seems right, because sometimes we're not clear.
Well...
You don't just comment on...
So we sort of glean it out, and then we'll put it into some kind of a project request and run it, probably run it by you all before we get to here the part. But this, this is a building year, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And already, we're, we're a bit behind on this. And we got the form pulled together late in the process and got it out to the department as late in the process, so we haven't even formulated our recommendations for your meeting next Wednesday, so we're a little bit scrambling to get something put together for you for next Wednesday. It's just a, a new sort of effort that is, we're going to eventually get to be a lot better. And everybody's on the same page with it now, I think, as far as what we want to see from departments, they're getting on board, so we're, we're getting there, but it's not going to be 100% official 19. And I unfortunately have to leave at, it's somewhere 5:30, so I'm not familiar with the woman, but I wanted to mention one quick thing about scheduling. The idea that we've talked about is, after the Capcom has gone through its process, normally what we've done is had Capcom go to FinCom, and then somewhere along the line, sometimes there's a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. So we've tried to compress things a bit and have, at least tentatively at this point, scheduled another joint meeting, and you'll get a schedule about this shortly, on Tuesday, December 12th. At that point, the Capcom will have its recommendations, and the idea would be to present them to FinCom and BLS jointly. And then another meeting scheduled for the following Monday, the 18th, if needed, to clean up any loose ends, or maybe, maybe the selectmen say, oh, we want to talk about something further, or XYZ didn't get in, or whatever.
Sounds great.
So that's where we kind of are in our meeting.
Finally.
It's cool.
So it's, David, so David, our capital committees next meeting is our, this coming Wednesday, and that's to review capital requests. All capital requests?
Yes. Josie, maybe you can give me a little review?
Great.
Of what's coming here.
I like asking tough questions. Brian, how are you feeling?
About what? The last hour and a half? I think, I think it's new, I mean, Stephen, Julia, and myself have spoken extensively about the form, and it wasn't accepted, you know, we've talked about, we actually have identified a developer to be able to help develop this, we just have to sit down and kind of figure out how long it'll take, what, what shape we want it to, and I think it'll be great, I really do. I think so far the process is a lot better, I think it's a little bit new, but I think it's causing all the department heads to think a little bit more proactively, and I think that's only going to benefit everybody as we go through the process.
And you're the people that have to graduate this in the future. So we don't, every three years under the Capcom, that's another idea. This is why you're putting on this separate tool, to create an idea, you know, that's what...
Good.
Because God knows, it's tough Russian to read, you can't...
All right, motion to adjourn. Capcom. Okay.